I'll call the December meeting of the Area Plan Commission to order it. Can I have roll call, please?
Paul Alsup.
Here.
Ryan Baker.
Present.
Kevin Beaver.
Here.
Deborah Carter. Terry Clark. Mark Lincolnbeer. John Colet.
Here.
Don Froderman. Don Folt.
Present.
Don Hanley.
Here.
Marcus Mauer.
Here.
Debbie May.
Amanda Thompson.
William Verdine.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Could I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My Pledge of Allegiance fits with the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in physical liberty and justice.
I assume everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from our previous meeting as well as the status report. Any questions or corrections? Those in favor, aye, motion passes. We don't have any public comments. Okay. Executive Director's report.
Good evening. I have three things for you this evening. First off, would like to welcome a new member, a new slash old member, if you will, to our ranks representing Sugar Creek and Fayette Township and filling the seat of the late Jim Crisman. He is the Fayette Township trustee. Please join me in welcoming Paul Alsup. We also like to thank him for volunteering his time and knowledge and assisting us with our considerations.
Thank you.
Second, you have two handouts there in front of you. One of them is an updated plat for subdivision we'll be reviewing. And the third one is the Plan Commission dates, deadline dates, and meeting dates for next year. Please notice this is a handout and it is different from the ones that you got in your packets because upon reviewing this, I realized the April date coincided with the school corporation's spring break. So I shifted that back a week so that we don't have that overlap.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
Sidney?
My only big update would be that I did reach out to the Higbee Consercency District about the remapping project. And they anticipate a full completion of what they need to do by the end of December. And hopefully they will be able to know next year whether or not the remapping is going through. But with, there's long stretches between everything because of public, you're just publishing right now.
Okay. Any questions from anyone on the Plan Commission for the Director or Assistant Director? Not only. Those in favor, aye, motion passes. We need to take action tonight on the meeting dates. If everybody's had a chance to take a look at that, entertain a motion on that. Those in favor, aye, motion passes. We did have one administrative sub. There's a copy in your packet, no action necessary on that. No action necessary. It's an administrative sub. You're just given a copy for your records. Keep batting, keep batting the foul with all the others. Communications received. We do have those in front of us. There's a, there's an updated plat for one of our agenda items and then a remonstrance that we'll get to when we get to that, get to that item. We don't have any old business, so we'll move on to the agenda items under new business. City rezonings, docket number 101, special ordinance number 43 2025, parcel number, I'm not going to read it, from an R1 to an R2, two-family residential district.
The property owner is WTHKMR LLC, Mike Rogers. Proposed use is a duplex. Proposed zoning is R2, two-family residence district. Current zoning is R1, single-family residence district. The property is located on the southeast corner of North Fourteenth and a Half Street and Spang Avenue and does not yet have an assigned address. As in a neighborhood conservation district, it is R1 to the northeast, south and west. The petitioner is requesting to rezone the property that was approved to be subdivided in July of 2025, which was the fourteen and a half sub one lot, to be utilized as a duplex. Most of the area is single-family with M2 to the west, which approximately thirteen hundred fifty feet, and south approximately three hundred fifty feet. There is not any properties owned R2, two-family residence district in the area, the nearest being over three thousand feet to the northeast on Twenty-second and Burn Avenue. It is unknown how many bedrooms will be on each side of the duplex. The number of bedrooms determines the number of off-street parking spaces. Parking will need to be hard-surfaced and approved by the Department of Engineering. In their recommendation, the Department of Engineering states the intended use would not alter the neighborhood's characteristic or create any significant problems for the surrounding area. The Department of Engineering provided a favorable recommendation and staff offers a favorable recommendation with site plan approval by the Engineering Department.
Is the petitioner present? Is there anything you'd like to add to the staff's report? No? Any questions for the petitioner from anyone on the Plan Commission? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this request?
Yes.
If so, just come up to the mic, give us your name and address and...
My name's Tracy Sutton, forty-two thirty North Fourteenth and a Half Street. I'm right across from this property. I submitted to you guys our reasons for not wanting it. We have a signed petition. That's within like a two-block radius that I gave you. That's not all of the neighborhood. That's just the people that it would really affect. So it's R2, it's older homes through there. There are no rentals in that area. We don't wa, I didn't, we don't want it. It would stand out like a sore thumb in our neighborhood. I just, I just, we just don't want it. I don't know what else to say, but...
Now, I think Jared has a copy of the petition, don't you?
Yeah, yeah.
Or has it been passed around or did you leave it with me or it's, it's someplace?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the traffic is bad enough as it is on that stretch of Spang Avenue right there. And we think that that's probably where they pull out from. Am I right, Mike?
Yes.
I mean, is that how they'd be sitting towards Spang? Yeah, that's, that's a bad area with traffic anyway, so...
Okay. We'll give the, give them an opportunity to talk. Don't, don't interrupt them.
Okay.
It won't help your cause.
I don't know. Do you guys have anything else to say, Kim, or anything?
If anyone else would like to come up, just give us your name and address so we gather for the record.
I took pictures, but with the snow, it can't, it doesn't show where the property lines are or anything like that, so...
Sure.
I didn't submit those, but yeah, that's it, so, thank you.
Any questions from the Plan Commission? Nope?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this? Go ahead.
My name is Donna Chapman. I have lived in my home for fifty-three years. It's a very nice, older neighborhood, but we do have some small children in homes on Fourteenth and a Half Street. We are not detesting a one single home. We do not want it to be an F2 or an R2, I'm sorry. We, we love our neighborhood and we don't, we do not want homes connected together. We, one home would be very nice for our neighborhood in the surrounding two-block area. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak to this issue? Cheryl?
I feel so short. Office of this, Cheryl Lautermilk, nineteen twenty-six Burn Avenue. For those who don't know, I am the city council member of, of that district. I have spoke to Mike whenever I, I signed the petition for him to be heard by the city council. I did explain to him at this point, I couldn't quite support it. I do agree with them. Our neighborhood is an older neighborhood. If we were just developing that neighborhood and we were putting some different multifamily in there, I would, I would probably support it and, and understand it. It, but it's going into the center kind of of the neighborhood on that corner. And they're right, there's really only one other R2 that's been there since those houses were built back in the fifties. And I think we need to check that map because I think it's at Twenty-second and Dolan and not Twenty-second and Burn, but I noticed that on the map. But anyway, that, that is, that is the whole concern. It, it would just change a little bit of it. I have no problem with the developer. I haven't, it's nothing like that. I would, if he could put single-family homes in, I think that that would be the best for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else like to speak to this issue? Any questions or comments from the Plan Commission? Go ahead.
I would just say I'm familiar with the area as well and I'm familiar with Cheryl and her campaign. I do share most concerns. I know these requests, but quite often, a lot of times we do make a favorable, we need the city council to be given an initial request to be a favorable, but I agree that R2 would be a vast difference to make, especially just given how central to that neighborhood it is.
Okay. Would the petitioner like to address any of these issues or respond in any way?
No, it's okay.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone on the Plan Commission?
What did you say about most of the changes in this area?
I think it was about three thousand square, or four thousand feet away.
Go ahead, Ryan. Yes.
Is the hangup because it's rental or is it because it's new?
I would say both. I mean, we, you know...
I mean, he could sell both sides of it easily.
He could, yes.
Down the middle and then it'd be a single-family home.
To set a duplex of, of single-family homes, you're going to know, I mean, it's going to stick out like a sore thumb. People are going to assume they're rentals, for one thing. When I go to, when I die, my son goes to sell my house, they're probably right across from a duplex. I'm going to have a hard time selling my house for that reason because people are going to think those are probably rentals in that duplex. A lot of people don't buy just a duplex to live in for the next fifty years, you know? It's the aesthetic.
This is in my neighborhood. We've sold both for rentals, huh? We don't have any property value.
Yeah, I don't think his intent is to sell to individuals, for what I, for what I...
The lots that's made is doing this, but they're... That's helping somebody build a house on it.
Oh, absolutely. You know what, we're all for that. We're all for that for, uh, single-family homes, absolutely. We understand that there's, you know, progress and we've been lucky to have that land open all these years. We, you know, we've been fortunate that way. And when the owner sold that house, we figured this was going to happen, but we just didn't know it would be a duplex. So that's what we're, it's a structure.
Anyone else on the Plan Commission have any comments, questions? Not all, entertain a motion. We got a motion on the floor to forward no recommendation and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Next item under new business, city rezonings, docket number 104, special ordinance forty-two, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-three forty and twenty-three fifty, North Twenty-fourth Street, Terre Haute, from an R1 to an M1 light industrial district.
The property owners are John and Martha Ennis, represented by Mr. Shagley. The proposed use is an automobile stoic, storage slash tow yard. Proposed zoning is M1 light industrial district. Current zoning is R1, single-family residence district. The property is located one hundred and eighty feet south of the corner of Barber Avenue and North Twenty-fourth Street. To the north is M2 and M1, R1 is to the east and south, and M2 and R1 to the west. The petitioner is requesting to rezone the property to M1 light industry district for an automobiles, automobile storage slash tow yard. The property at twenty-three fifty North Twenty-fourth Street was combined into one parcel in the past with two separate zoning classifications. The petitioner wants to bring both parcels into compliance. There is residential zoning to the east and south. Within three hundred feet of a residence district, all storage except a motor vehicle shall be completely enclosed in buildings or may be located out of doors if it is effectively screened by a solid wall or fence as specified in section ten dash one seventy-two E of City Code. Site plan was not provided other than a printout from Beacon. The property owner should consult the Department of Engineering as to the setbacks on forty, Twenty-fourth Street. A variance may be required. It may also need a side setback variance if the lots are not combined. Department of Engineering's recommendations said the parcels surrounding this property are zoned M2 to the north and west and R1 to the south and east. The intended use would not alter the neighborhood's characteristic or create any significant problems for the surrounding area. The Department of Engineering provided a favorable recommendation. Staff also offers a favorable recommendation with the following conditions: Site plan approval by city engineering and BZA approval if necessary.
Mr. Shagley.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the commission. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm with the Law Firm of Wright, Shagley and Lowery. And tonight I'm here on behalf of John and Martha Ennis. As stated, this property is located twenty-three forty and twenty-three fifty North Twenty-fourth Street. This, it's interesting. I, I've since filed an amended document because the, we were originally just going to rezone the vacant lot next to the building. But it turns out when they, I don't know how it happened, when they did the map, that lot next to it, that has the building and the open area down the middle, that it gave two different zoning classifications. So now we're going here to rezone the building and then the vacant lot to the left or to the south. As stated, this is going to be, John and Martha, I believe, are going to be selling this to a company that is going to run a tow yard out of it. I had the opportunity to drive the property today or around the property. It's tucked back, kind of hidden away. There's all kinds of commercial manufacturing right around the corner. There's a nice buffer between the, the residential areas that are there. And as a result, we would ask for a favorable recommendation for this rezoning. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions from anyone on the Plan Commission? Go ahead.
Well, I think the, I think Sparkle Pool used to have it. Yeah. Because then you go around the corner and you have a rail yard and then there's something on the other side of the fence. I couldn't see through the fence because that is a screened fence.
But I think Brad did have it after Sparkle.
Oh, did Brad have it?
I believe so. I think that's right.
Yeah. Yeah.
It looks like it.
And there's a road that goes between the two fences that goes, I think, to the, the radio tower. There's a monstrous radio tower right there, you know? Well, it was M2 and I don't know when, does anybody know the history of when they? If, if you look on Beacon, the, the building and existing fenced-in parking lot is M2. But when they drew the line, I don't know if it was just whatever happened, but they divided that property. Half of it's R1, half of it's M2. And then the vacant lot that we were originally trying to rezone and still trying to rezone is the part that's R1 as well. Uh, M2, I'm sorry. Yeah, M1, I'm sorry, yeah, M1, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. There's a lot more hoops they got to jump through. Yeah.
Amanda?
How long has the property had this been here?
A long time.
So it's, it's never really been used as...
No, no.
It's been stored before, she says.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions from anyone on the Plan Commission? Anyone here would like to speak to this issue? I'll, I'll entertain a motion. Those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item under new business subdivisions, minor, primary, secondary, docket number ninety-nine, file fifty-six, two thousand twenty-five, Ray two.
The property is commonly associated with fifty-five fifty-eight West Cassidy Drive. However, the subdivision is closer to fifty-two ninety-eight West Cassidy Drive. It's eight point six one acres. The surveyor is Mr. Wagner. The request is to subdivide the parent tract, creating two new lots with the intent to be used as residential. Health department review is still pending. Sanitary sewer is not available. Public water is not available. It's not in the flood zone and the lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement. Typically, stormwater drainage is required with major subdivisions. Easement has been planted for access to lot two. Staff is of the opinion that addition of a new residence or two at this location would not serve to overburden the local infrastructure. So offered a favorable in the primary and secondary with health department approval still needed and as well as it needing to be recorded within ninety days.
Is the petitioner present? Anything you'd like to add to staff's report? Any questions from the Plan Commission for the petitioner? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? I'll entertain a motion. Those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion passes. Next item under new business subdivisions, minor, primary, secondary, docket number one zero two, file number fifty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, Anthony D. and Dorinda K. Lavalli, minor subdivision.
The property is on East Moyer Drive, commonly associated with sixty-seven, no, sixty-four seventy-seven East Moyer Drive. Three point oh eight acres, two lots. The surveyor is Mr. Norman. Request is to subdivide the parent tract, creating two lots for residential development. Health department has approved. Sanitary sewer is not available. Public water is not available. It's not in the flood zone and the lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement. You do have a handout there in front of you. It is an updated plat that has addressed some of the comments staff included in our reports, mainly all of those listed in paragraphs one and two. So moving on to the third paragraph, this is a major subdivision due to the number of lots created from the parent tract over time. Due to the size and intended use of the property, staff would request a waiver of the major subdivision rules in favor of the minor subdivision rules. And staff is of the opinion that the addition of a new residence qualification would not serve to overburden the local infrastructure. So offered a favorable in the primary and secondary, but the only thing still needed a road cut permit and it should be recorded within ninety days. The other three items have been satisfied.
Okay. Is the petitioner present? Anything you'd like to add to staff's report?
We just separated for them, my daughter built the house behind us, that's all.
Okay. Any questions for the petitioner from anyone on the Plan Commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? Not all, entertain a motion. Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next item under new business county rezonings, docket number ninety-eight, UZO number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five, one zero five three zero, East State Road, two forty-six Lewis, from an RS to an A1 agricultural and rural residential district.
The property is as stated there in Lewis. It is currently zoned RS, single-family residential suburban district. The property owner is wished to rezone to A1 agricultural district for that single-family home with farm animals, which will include horses. The area is identified as rural conservation by guidance. Surrounding uses are residential suburban to the northwest and east. To the south is Sullivan County. North is also an A1 or agricultural. So area consists of small residential planted lots, single-family homes and vacant lots. Surrounding the town is agricultural property. The area does not have sanitary sewer or public water. Notices were sent out to adjacent property owners within a half-mile of the address, due to satisfaction of section one N of the UZO. Barnyard animals will be permitted and are anticipated, as well as any other uses identified under Indiana Code thirty-six seven four sixteen six one. This portion of Vigo County was zoned RS as an original zoning. Depending on the animal request, an initial rezoning may not be needed. In twenty twenty-one, the commission adopted an amendment to chapter forty-nine Animal Control Ordinance that permits goats, chickens, sheep, and rabbits in any area in Vigo County. All of these are four H animals. Further, Indiana Code thirty-two thirty-six nine D states that an agricultural or industrial operation or any of its percolances is not and does not become a nuisance, private or public, by any change condition in the vicinity of the location after the agricultural or industrial operation, as the case may be, has been in operation continuously on the locality for more than one year. So thus, after the first year of owning any of the permitted barnyard animals, the property owner is protected by Indiana's Right to Farm Act and may undergo a change in the type of operation, which will allow for any of the four H animals to be kept at that location, including larger farm animals. However, if the desire is to maintain larger barnyard animals immediately on the property as indicated in the petition, then the A1 zoning would be appropriate. So we did offer a favorable recommendation for the rezoning request.
Is the petitioner present?
Yes.
Anything you'd like to add to staff's report?
Not much, any questions?
Nope. Any questions from anyone on the Plan Commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? Not all, entertain a motion. Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next item under new business county rezonings, docket number one hundred, UZO twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five, one zero five three two, East Union Drive, Lewis, and vacant lots with no addresses, from an RS to an A1 agricultural rural residential district.
Yes, as noted, the address, one oh five three two East Union Drive in Lewis, is an adjoining property owner to the previous petitioner. Thus, staff's comments mirror identically what they were on the previous...
Same purpose.
Same purpose. So we offered a favorable recommendation for this petition request as well.
I assume nothing you'd like to add? Okay. No, no questions from the Plan Commission? Anyone, anyone else? Go ahead.
Sorry, this is a very cool house. I hope you're, is the plan done to keep the house in progress? How did this, I can't tell you.
I don't know when that is.
That's for better.
Oh, thank you. Okay, I was looking for the wrong one.
That's for your next one.
Next one. Whoever's up next has got a cool house. We got a motion for a favorable recommendation. Do I have a second? Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item under new business county rezonings, docket number one zero three, UZO twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five, six zero five, Putter Point Court, Terre Haute, from an OS to an RS, single-family residential suburban district.
Yes, as stated, the common address is six oh five Putter Point Court. Property located on the dead-end street that abuts Terre Haute Country Club Golf Course. It is currently zoned OS, open space. The property owners requested a rezoning to car one, single-family residential district with the proposed use of the existing single-family home. Represented by Mr. Shagley. Area is identified as residential suburban. Surrounding uses are open space to the north, south, west, also north, south, and east, include R1 or single-family residential. A petitioner purchased the property at the beginning of the year and would like to combine both parcels. The OS parcel was purchased from the Terre Haute Country Club in twenty twenty-one. Original owners did get an improvement location permit to extend the concrete and add a sunroom, poolhouse, and covered porch. As multiple zonings are not permitted on one parcel, this would bring the property into compliance and allow for the parcels to be combined. So we offered a favorable recommendation for the rezoning request.
Mr. Shagley.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the commission.
You're representing this cool house, huh?
I do represent this cool house that they're not going to tear down. But we are here tonight to ask for it to be rezoned. As stated, it's currently open space because it was part of the Country Club property. And the petitioner is hoping to combine the parcels and then be able to claim a home seclusion for the complete parcel. They're the recent purchasers of it. They're the recent purchasers of it and they are here this evening if you'd like to ask. I told them they didn't have to come tonight. I felt pretty confident about it, but we also have a secret weapon with us. We've got a brand-new baby, so if I need to play that card, I am more than willing to. So anything for a favorable recommendation from this wonderful group of people? I'd be happy to answer your questions you may have.
Any questions? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? Entertain a motion. Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item under new business resolutions, docket number one zero five, resolution number four, two thousand twenty-five, a resolution of the Vigo County Area Planning Commission approving a declaratory resolution thirty, two thousand twenty-five, of the City of Terre Haute Redevelopment Commission and an amendment to the Economic Development Plan for the twenty twenty consolidated economic development area and designation of an allocation area within the City of Terre Haute, Indiana, Terra Vista Phase Three.
So yes, the petitioner in this case is the Terre Haute City Redevelopment Commission who wishes to amend their economic development plan for the Terra Vista Phase Three residential housing allocation area. In the past, Dustin Meeks has appeared before us to, to help us interpret what exactly they are asking, but I believe he found someone else to stand in his stead this evening to help us understand exactly what this request is.
Thank you, Executive Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name, I am not Dustin Meeks. My name is Max Adams with the Law Firm of Barnes and Thornburg, here on behalf of the City of Terre Haute Redevelopment Commission. I have for your consideration resolution number four dash twenty twenty-five, I believe. This resolution does a few things. Before I get into that, I'm sure this commission is, is very aware of how allocation areas are created, but just for the sake of being thorough, you know, redevelopment commission sort of approves the creation of this allocation area, then it goes to the planning commission with the jurisdiction over the area, then if, assuming a favorable recommendation, goes to the city council and then back to the redevelopment commission for a public hearing and final approval. So this is step two of that process. This is for a residential housing allocation area. I believe the, the plan is to create or implement infrastructure for the area to, to help support the construction of around fifty single-family homes. Resolution is a few things. Obviously, it approves the creation of this allocation area, also approves amendment to the Economic Development Plan for the economic development area, and that amendment simply is just to allow for this construction in the area that will be leveraging the allocation, I should say, the TIF dollars from that allocation area. With that, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions, the planning commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request?
I'm not speaking in opposition.
Thank God.
Richard Shagley, Ten Bogart Drive. I live, I walk and or run through this neighborhood every morning. I think this is a, a good project. It's a great piece of dirt. This is a great tool for a builder and I hope you approve this and let it keep going. This is a great thing for RS.
Thanks, Richard.
Although, when the houses are built, if you would just make sure that the roads are clear. About, fell, this is... Hopefully, no way...
I'll do everything I can.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion. Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Do we have a motion adjourned? The favor? Aye. Not too bad. Yeah.